No, no.
We're gonna send you a report of everything we do.
Word for word.
It should be on?
Okay, let's call the meeting.
No, I'm just kidding.
I know you are.
We will call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 9, 2017. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed.
I have the April 2017 Treasuries Reconciliation Report filed and April 2017 Sheriff's File.
Okay. Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events?
The Planning Commission meeting tonight, MAC Board meeting tomorrow, Sodways Management District Board meeting tomorrow, HBA tomorrow, Chiefs Thursday, we've got our Renegades Coffee Friday, we've got Radio Friday.
And we got KWS.
I can't make it. I have to blow senior breakfast. It's not for old people. Sam, you can't come. It's for the seniors of the school.
I'm a senior.
I know, but not that way.
Okay.
And then Mother's Day Sunday, so I think that's it.
I got CAP Region Executive Board meeting tomorrow, Thursday, I'm meeting with some constituents at 10:00, LEPCE meeting, Chamber Retail and Sunday meeting, Renegades, and then KWS. You want to do it or you want me to do KWS?
I can probably do it.
Okay. I'll let John know. Appointments by commission, reappointment of Chris Henley, Roger Schwartz and Doug Shmetschowski to the Cole County Residential Services Board. We had received a letter and they said they would like to serve another term, so. I don't really have that thing to sign, but they don't.
I don't need to sign it, I would just appoint them.
Three-year term or is it mixed or?
I think they're three. I know they had some openings for a while, so I'm, again, I'm very appreciative of people who want to serve on our committees and boards. Pay's not real good.
Your pauses are awesome. Do you have your letter?
No, I'd give it to...
Do you have the appointing?
Yes, you do.
So all of them?
Yeah.
I'm trying to find my document that has the... Boards and appointments. I think they're appointed until they find somebody to take their place.
Yeah, I know, on transportation, traffic, I was term limited and Pat Sullivan said you serve until you're replaced.
Pretty quick.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah, if they'll do it, that's awesome.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Chris Henley or Roger Schwartz and Doug Shmetschowski.
Second.
Cole County Residential Services Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, there were some other ones that Dan Renfro expires 2017. Did we find somebody to replace him? Or did we reappoint him already?
Who's that?
Dan Renfro. There's one, two, three, four of them that expired in 17. And there's one, two, three that expired in 16, and two in 15. I guess I'll let us know if they have vacancies.
Yeah, these...
It's the same one.
Cole County Residential.
I was just looking at them because they are three-year terms, a lot of them reappointed, so.
I'll talk to Jim and see. Okay, bids and contracts, signing of contract for bid number 2017-17 Banking Services.
This is just the Central Bank contract that you guys wanted to help. Services commence on July 1st.
Sorry, do you have some comments on the yield on the banking?
Well, yeah, since we didn't go over it last time, just if you all were interested in understanding how the yield that Central Bank will be giving us on our 30-plus million dollars we have on deposits there. Right now, it's 2.55% on the first 15 million, and then the overnight rate, repurchase agreements is .05 on the next 15 million. So it nets out to about 2.6, well, excuse me, it nets out to about 1.3, which is what we're earning right now. Our last receipt for the month of April interest came to just under $34,000, which is a decent haul compared to, there's no other county that got that 2.55%. We enjoyed that for four years, milked it for all it's worth, and so now, you know, it's a, I think Central Bank thought rates were going to tick up. Four years ago, they didn't tick up. They've only had two, Federal Reserve has only had two rate increases on their federal funds rate in all that four years. So we've been the benefactor of that. So now you might wonder what's going to happen under the new contract. The new contract for banking services calls for, instead of a fixed rate of 2.55%, on the first 15 million, calls for a fluctuating rate based on the three-month treasury note. So wherever that thing goes, we're going to get 16 basis points or .16% above whatever that three-month treasury note rate is. When you all opened your bids a week or two ago, it was at .80, I think. Today, it's at .90 or .91. So 16 basis points puts us at .06, which is, you know, if we're making .1, if we're making 1.30 now, we'll be making, under the new contract, we'll be making 1.06 today. So that's a shortfall of about 18 or so points, which I guess works out to about maybe 24%. I figured we'd be losing $7,000 or $8,000 the first month under this new contract. But the nice thing is, is the Federal Reserve has penciled in two rate increases for 2017. So if the economy keeps humming along, not at a fantastic rate, but as news coming on, the economy stays on its current course, then in June, we'll see a .25% rate increase, which almost usually is reflected in a three-month treasury note increase of that same amount, usually several weeks before. The market kind of bakes that into what they think the rate's going to be. So in other words, by June of this year, here in the next month or two, if that rate increase is going to take place, we'll be at or above what we're already making, will be 1.31 instead of 1.30, based on today's three-month treasury note. That also means later in the year, in October or December, if the Fed raises it again, then we're doing, you know, .25% better later this year than we are right now under the nice old contract. So really, I guess in summation, our yield, you know, is going to be totally dependent on what happens with that three-month treasury note rate. So as it goes up, we'll make more money. As it goes down, we'll make less money. The trend right now is in our favor, and I think it's a good thing that even though Central Bank was the only bidder, that it appears that we came out on the good side. Do you have any questions I could answer?
Why is the three-month treasury note average seem to increase over the past three or four months?
Well, the increase that you saw three months ago was when they raised it to .25% in March. I forget what date that was. So that accounts for, it jumps from 50 into the 70s. That's that .25% that the market's building, has baked into the increase in the rate. The last week or two or three, it's jumped up, you know, .10 or 10 more basis points, and the market is saying that that's due to things calming. The French election is over and a moderate was elected, not a right name, and all sorts of stuff across the world. World news is rather calm, as it was, say, a month or two ago. And that's to account for why the three-month treasury note now is higher than it was when you all opened the bid just a couple of weeks ago. The markets are calmer, and a calmer market then is to account for that. At least that's what I read.
Quite a jump from .5 and dead work.
Right. There's also three penciled-in rate increases in 2018, so if the economy stays good, we could be doing quite well into 2018 or towards the end of 2018. We would see more yield than we've seen in the eight years I've been treasurer and since the Great Depression, so. So let's just hope it continues that way. And if, you know, if the economy tanks, that treasury note rate will actually increase. It's when the Fed reduces the rate, that's what will hurt us. If the economy goes bad, the three-month treasury note will actually become more attractive for investors. But the Fed will reduce their Fed funds rate, and that's what will, that's what will, that's what will reduce our rate, if that makes sense. As the Fed reduces their Fed funds rate, that treasury note will go down. But all things being equal, a bad economy does not mean that the three-month treasury note will lose value. Usually, it actually gains value. So it's all up to the Fed. That's the flip side of being in a contract with Central Bank where the yield is based on a fluctuating bill as opposed to a static rate like we had before. So it's, you know, sometimes it'll be great and sometimes it'll be not so great. So it just depends on the economy.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we're not losing money, we're just not making as much.
I move that we sign the banking services contract with Central Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John just stepped out. Bid award 2017-14 Inmate Welfare Products.
If you look at the bid tab and consider the five companies that bid almost all of the items, I think there was a handful at the top that a couple didn't. But anyway, lowest bid overall is with Bob Barker Company. We've been using them for the past six-plus years with no issue. So that's the recommendation is to award to Bob Barker Company.
So in general, it looks like Bob Barker is probably the cheapest, but looking just at uniforms and stuff, it looks like another company is somewhat cheaper for some of the sizes.
If you want to go with one company, there's two attachments that you should have. And the one is the estimated total spend. And Bob Barker, when it was all said and done, was the low bid at an estimated $23,625, considering the year. So, yeah, they're going to all kind of jump back and forth a little bit, but they were the overall lowest.
It's known to pass for other, for medical stuff, for EMS, for other things, for public works. We've done lowest and best and available, in each category with available materials, so.
We've always awarded this one to Bob Barker for whatever reason. I think that you guys, whenever you order this, kind of order in bulk where it's a lot fewer, you know, opportunities to have issues.
But was it bid as a package thing or where we can?
You can do whatever you want. It was bid to where we can do whatever benefits it.
So if we bid it as a package deal, then?
I mean, if you want, you can award it to the lowest of best, the middle of the product, and then the sheriff's department can just use it.
Tim does really good on this when it comes to ordering this kind of stuff. We look at Bob Barker if that's who we get the award with, but he also looks at other vendors. So if we award this to Bob Barker, he will look at other vendors longer within the $4,500 and three-month window than will buy from somebody else. So it's not like we, if you say Bob Barker, we have to go with Bob Barker because we don't, we still go to the lowest, but we have to keep it within that $4,500. It just gets really complicated. Whenever we did this stuff with the uniforms and stuff, it got really complicated on billing. It got really complicated on what was within the contract, what wasn't. We'd rather go with one bid. That way, it lessens the turmoil, I guess you could say, for the billing portion of it.
What are you looking at doing, t-shirts in particular?
Uh, yeah, it was basically men's and women's.
Oh, there's khaki, different colors.
Khakis, you know. I mean, it was, you know, just, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but I mean, it is. I mean, it's, you know, almost 40 cents a shirt if you're doing khaki, men's uniform shirt khaki. I don't know what the quality is. I mean, I assume it's the same, so. And I just, I don't know, it seems odd if we award to Bob Barker that you could still go out and buy from somebody else because what's the point of bidding if we're gonna?
Because it blocks the price in. And they can always go lower. So if we contact, for instance, if we're looking for t-shirts and we go to call Bob Barker and we're going to buy this price, but we tell them that we could get it from vendor A, they can always lower their price. They can't raise it. So if they still want the business, then they would lower their price.
I get what you're saying, but that don't seem like it's right. I mean, so you're saying I got to lock in my price, but then you're going to jew me down if you can buy it from somewhere else. I mean, that's, I mean...
It's doing or can buy?
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. It's, you go, you go with what the price is best for what your needs are. If you want us to do...
So when we bid it, when we bid a construction project, we can say, we're going to award it to this guy, and then we're going to try to jew him down?
No, construction contract.
It's the same thing.
No, I don't think it is. I don't think you can relate a construction contract with a t-shirt. I don't think you can do that. I think that we do what's best. If you don't want us to do the Bob Barker, we don't have to do it. We can just try to continually always see where we're at on the $4,500 and dance around and get different type of materials in there and different quality of materials.
I guess that's what I was asking. I mean, obviously, if vendor A is bidding something different than what we expect, then there's apples and oranges that we're comparing. If, and then I'm okay with if your recommendation is Bob Barker, but if they're bidding the exact same t-shirt, whatever it is, then, you know, in my opinion, that we should go with the lowest and best with the available material. But if there's a difference, that's what I need to know.
We know about the quality of Bob Barker because we've been using.
There is a difference, though, because you have a minimum quantity of one from Bob Barker, and you got a minimum quantity of 72 from the other company that's eight cents cheaper. So if you're wanting to buy, you know, two dozen, there is a difference. They're going to honor that price at one or 60, and the other one's not going to honor the price. They're at 72, so. The other one, I think, is at 10 dozen, and one's at 220 is their minimum. So there is a difference.
Yeah, I was looking at the...
So what's your, what's y'all's recommendation? Do you want us to pass up on the Bob Barker?
I'm fine with Bob Barker. I think we were just talking out loud about the price of the t-shirts. We weren't going to let you get away with just like a 10 second, okay?
I'm looking for two more things, so it's not a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not going to wait, I'm not going to wait yet. But it's whatever your pleasure is. If you don't want us to do Bob Barker, then we won't. If you want us to do Bob Barker and only buy from Bob Barker, I don't have a problem with it. It's going to cost us more money. But if you want to do it that way, I'm okay with it.
I was fine with the way it was.
Yeah, as long, as long as you're doing due diligence and checking, I mean...
Lieutenant Rowland is very good at this type of thing.
Yeah, yeah, let's...
Are we just awarding something then, or?
Do we have a contract for it, John?
No, no contract. Just award it.
I move that we award, oh, what are we talking about here? Inmate Welfare Products to Bob Barker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annual renewal of contract for Adult Brain Injury Service Coordination.
Good morning. This is the annual renewal for, are the Adult Brain Injury Service Coordinator that works out of our office, Shonhard, that services 15 counties. The amount is the same as last year, and so are the contract deliverables. Nothing new.
Got a contract?
Yep.
DHSS or?
Yes.
I move that we sign the Adult Brain Injury Service Coordination contract with DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of Salute to America Agreement.
I thought Jeff told somebody the other day that it was 10.
That's what I thought it always was.
It was until this year.
So you want to give more?
You all changed during the budget.
Remember that?
No.
You said if you were going to do any of them, you were only going to do five.
I said that five years ago when we raised it to 10,000.
We listened this time, the rest of us didn't.
Well, that's what I was just looking at because I saw in the contract it was 5,000, so I was trying to look at my notes and my budget. I ain't found it yet. So now she wants 10,000?
Well, no, you said something to somebody and got back to Jill, and she was like, hey, you guys approve 10, we'll take 10.
They asked how much we were given. I thought it was 10, so.
I think we've sworn under 5,000.
It wasn't under 5,000.
I'm like right twice a day, so that was one of the times I was wrong.
Kind of like the clock when it didn't run.
Hey, you leave my clock alone now. You're going to tread on, the clock was a touch issue.
When we, we cut the General Welfare and we cut the salute spend.
I might not have my coffee yet that morning. Where is that part at underneath of our budget?
It's under...
Economic Development.
Okay, what page or what?
Page 46.
Department 127.
Well, there's, no, oh, found it, okay, page 46. You'd think they'd be like some kind of order.
Just randomly?
You know, I can't complain because my filing system is the same way. Everything's filed under N for miscellaneous. I have trouble finding things sometimes, too. It's an organized mess. Oh, you don't have it broke down in here?
I think you have it listed there.
Well, I apologize for misquoting the amount. I thought we were still at 10, so.
Here, right here, 5,000.
That's the agreement. That's not what we talked about, budget though, for sure. I don't know that. You got it recorded? Let's go back there.
Yeah, we probably do.
Yeah, that's true.
You don't believe the four of us that are sitting here telling you that you worked with this?
I like it. It's better than that 10,000.
Yeah, this was your push. You should remember this. It should be fresh in your mind.
So it was a long weekend. Well, that's good.
I move that we approve the agreement with Salute to America.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. See, John, we're not just picking on you. Everybody's in with the boy today.
Do we have any unfinished business?
Well, while we're here, I did have a request come from Daily Planet for Thursday Night Live and Capital Eclipse. She's asking for $2,500 for both of those, so just something to chew on. So we don't have to take any action today. Thought I'd let you know.
Next.
Okay. New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I'd ask her approval of the accounts payable pending review.
You got one in there or no?
I think so.
I don't think so.
I move that we approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sole Source Approval for Strategos International LLC.
This is, due to recent, some of the recent, I'm not going to talk next time. Okay, I want to. Some of the recent events that's been occurring in the county with some, not only here, with some hostile people on the phones, and some stuff that's happened over at our facility itself, we wanted to give some training to the employees of Cole County in a whole. So this is the specialized training that we went to that would be able to let us bring people in. We're not going to charge anybody anything for it. We do it for free, and we're not going to make anybody come to it, or, well, I'm making all my people go to it. But it's a good training to go through on what to do for intruders and situations like that. And I don't believe we've had training like that for our employees. And it can be, it can be an hour, it can be two hours, or it can be four hours. Of course, the more in-depth you go into it, there's actually scenario bases and a bunch of other stuff. So it's very good training. Nobody's contacted me in any way about the Sole Source, so.
Cost?
It was a little over 5,000. Myself and one of my reserve deputies went, so I didn't have to pay any salaries. And then whenever he comes to help teach, I wouldn't have to pay him either. And he volunteered for that. No, it was Andrew Lee or...
You got it in your budget somewhere or?
Yes. I took it out of my civil funds. I think it's that important, especially, I mean, I think it's that important for our staff to make them feel more secure and safe. But I also think it's important, especially for some of those individuals that, like over here, we'd respond pretty quick. But like Health Department, it gives us a, be able to go through and actually give them a, not a curriculum, but a plan on what to do to deal with this kind of stuff.
Okay. You guys good or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got it in your budget, too, so. I remember we talked about that.
This is just, just approving the Sole Source, right?
Yes.
And then we're just going to run that in the paper?
It's already been run.
Yeah.
Now you have to see it.
I move that we approve the Sole Source for Strategos International LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll set this training up.
That was easier than the shirts in the bar soap. That was easier than the shirts and the bar soap.
What's that? It's far as you know.
And your training bras. This is the easier.
I do you see that, Jeff?
What?
I'm assuming that's just, oh, that one. Check, 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 check. Okay.
Yeah, it's cuss drop.
Oh, yeah.
You can just write a check later, Sam. You, Kate, you can donate to my Relay for Life Power and Purple team. It's Cole County versus Boone County.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Okay. EMS staffing. Jerry?
Okay, I've, uh, sent you some snapshots of what we've been going through the last, uh, few months and we've talked about previously. Um, we had nine-hundred-and-fifty-five calls in April, which was just shy of our record of, I think, nine-seventy-one. And this month, we're on a clip to do eleven-hundred-and-twenty-five. We can't continue to do this current staffing that we have. What, what is of issue and what's, what's been of issue in the past is that the collection rate that we see doesn't seem to jive with the volume that we do. But as, as I've explained previously, there's a lag in payment from all the insurance companies of ninety to a hundred-and-twenty days. So, if you just looked at gross revenue by the month, you would see a dramatic increase from, uh, what we've done in the past, because that is month to month. What you see in the collection for the month in our reports is prior month's, uh, runs. So, um, when Paramedics Plus was here, uh, they did analysis and, and John shared with me that, uh, they were ready to propose an additional twelve-hour shift, seven days a week. He felt like it wasn't the time nor the place for them to do that, that we should continue to explore this. And in my four months here, I've, I've seen that off and on, but it's been more on than off, um, the last two months. In fact, uh, over the weekend, we hired two crews at overtime rate to fill the gaps, to make sure that we provide coverage to residents of the community. We can't keep doing that. We'll burn our staff out and we're spending money needlessly at an overtime rate rather than at a regular time rate. So, um, when I proposed this earlier, we talked about this earlier, I had direction to go back with Debbie and with Kristen and rerun the numbers and look at them in a bit of a different format and get the, uh, the benefits correct. I underestimated the benefits. So, I sent you a spreadsheet yesterday, um, that takes into account, what the revenue would be, uh, if we capture more of the transfers. And we're, we're never gonna staff to get all the transfers. It's just, it, I don't see it to be a possibility here. Um, so that's not what we're trying to do, but what we are trying to do is capture the ones that we should be capturing and get those specialty care transports. So, we're about to start in the next couple of weeks. We start our ventilator training this week. The ventilators are here. We start that training. It'll take a couple of weeks to get that up and running. So, by June one, we'll be doing specialty care transports in addition to what we've been doing on top of that. And those, those are more time-consuming trips. They're, they take more time to get set up. They take more time to run, to get turned over at the other hospital and what have you. So, um, I believe we estimated we're going to do six to ten of those a month. So, there'll be additional right out of the, right out of the gate. And, uh, so with that, I, I think the time is now. I think we owe it to the residents of our community to, uh, to add this twelve-hour crew to assure that we have the adequate number of coverage. And the spreadsheet that you have is an annualized number. So, if we implemented sometime in July...
Which spreadsheet? Hold on, Jerry. What spreadsheet?
Yesterday, yesterday late morning, early afternoon, I sent you a script here. I've, I've...
Okay, I've got that one, but I also got some up here that we got copies of. I'm trying to figure out which one.
Here's the most recent. I only made three or four.
Yeah, that was, that was just a snapshot.
This was one.
This is what Kristen and Debbie and I came up with, mostly Kristen and Debbie and just a little bit me.
Right. That's, that's a thirty-day look, or that's a monthly look at revenues. Um, what I wanted to look at was, and you can see in that left column, and Jerry probably didn't have this, but you can see in the left column, the revenues or our charges are going up. But what's allowed is actually a lesser percentage. So, um, and I guess that was from the billing company. So, you can see that there, the number of trips is going up and the charges are going up, but they're not allowing, the money's not coming through.
Well, it, it won't begin for ninety to a hundred-and-twenty days. 'Cause we implemented that charge increase around April first. Is that right? Somewhere in there, I believe?
Right, but what this chart shows, and I don't have it in front of me, but...
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out, 'cause Jerry was referring to the one he emailed yesterday. I've got seventy-two emails.
Right.
I'm trying to cipher and then that one there, which wasn't on any of it, so trying to...
So, anyway, I, I can make copies of this, but, um, so this DSO report, and it's coming from the billing company. And so, um, in January of two thousand and sixteen, we did six-hundred-and-twenty-two transports. The quick med charges were four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. So, bring that forward to, say, March of seventeen, we did six-hundred-and-twenty-four transports and the met, quick med charges were six-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. But what's coming through is a whole lot less. So, our collections for sixteen, January sixteen was two-nineteen. Our collections for March was two-seventy-five. So, we did another hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars in charges, but we only received another fifty-five.
But he is right. Those are what we collected during the month. Really, it's just that month. It's not for those particular rides, because there could be a lag time.
If you, if you do a month-to-month analysis, you have to look at the gross charges. You, you can never, in our, in our business or in healthcare in general, you can never figure out month-to-month what your actual revenue is, because the insurance payments and the payments from the public who don't have to pay anything till the insurance pays or don't pay anything at all, those don't happen till ninety to a hundred-and-twenty days after. So, to do a, a monthly comparison of what your gross charges are and your net charges are is nearly impossible. You can talk to your folks at the hospital. They'll tell you the same thing. You cannot, you can never do a profit and loss statement completely accurately in terms of net revenue versus expense in a given month. You can, you can estimate it, but you can never tell absolutely one-hundred percent accurately that that's the case. 'Cause like I said, the, the, the charge increase that we saw in April isn't going to be reflected until July or August, probably.
But I, what I think is important about that is, like he said, they had nine-hundred-and-fifty-five transports. We only got to bill for six-hundred-and-seventy-nine of them, because for one reason or another, we don't get to bill for them. So, that's thirty percent we don't get to bill for. The other part of that is interesting is that from the discount of the then, um, seventy percent that's left that we do get to charge from, then we take another thirty-five percent hit on the discount. So, you're down, you know, about sixty-five percent, if you look at it that way, to what we're actually gonna recoup. So, yes, those totals are what we actually got in that month. Don't really reflect. But I'm kinda, you know, when we had eight-hundred-and-seventy-two transports, we still could only bill for six-hundred-and-twenty. I mean, we have nine-hundred-and-fifty-five, but yet we're only billing for six-seventy-nine? That would be my question there.
So, there's a variety of things that happen. Uh, somebody sees an accident, calls nine-one-one. And the ambulance is en route, or the ambulance gets there and no one's injured. So, we can't bill for that call. We don't bill for those calls. People refuse medical care or what have you. There's, there's other folks who are brittle diabetics who sugar get out of whack and will go to their house, start an IV, give them sugar in the vein, and they wake up and say, it happened again. I don't wanna go to the hospital. We call the doctor. The doctor gives them instructions over the phone. They sign a document. We can bill for those, because we actually did provide care. But it's at a greatly reduced rate to an ambulance transport. Keep in mind that the feds particularly, and most third-party payers run off with the feds do. They pay for transport. They'll, they will tell you, they don't pay for medical care. They pay for the transportation of the patient. So, uh, unless we do something clinically for the patient at the scene, we, we can't bill. So, there's cancellations, there's people that refuse care, uh, there's a variety of things that happen, because we've taught the public for the last thirty years, you see something bad happen, call nine-one-one. So, they see a fender bender in Walmart parking lot and they call nine-one-one. It comes through as a traffic accident, um, unknown injuries. So, you get police, you get fire, you get EMS. And usually, when the police department gets there, no injuries, everybody's fine, cancel fire and EMS. Well, it still goes down as a run, but a run canceled, so it's not billable. So, what we see here is fairly common. Usually see rates in the twenty percent for cancellations and refusals and what have you. So, what, what we see is here is, is fairly common for that. That, that's just, to be honest, that's part of the, the cost of doing business. We want, we've trained people to do that. So, so that explains the, why there's nine-hundred-and-fifty-five calls and six-hundred and so many transports. It's because there's a, a variety of reasons that there's refusals and cancellations and what have you.
It just, because we, you can see consistently in that blue column that we are in the six-hundreds that we bill for.
I can't see it.
I'm sorry, it was on that piece of paper.
I know, we got one piece of paper, so you're saying we can see it on that? I understand what you're saying, though, is we can't bill for them.
And, uh, when, when we built this spreadsheet, we, we built it very conservatively and I'm, I'm pretty confident telling you that the numbers you see here are the worst-case scenario. So, the addition of this staff puts at risk fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred dollars additional cost for the rest of the year, taking into account the increased revenue for transfers, the increased volume, and a collection rate, Debbie said sixty-five, we built sixty percent in. Just to be, uh, take a more pessimistic view of the revenue, so that, um, they were the number crunchers and I was the, the, the guy that projected the revenue and what have you. And I didn't want us to overstate the revenue and make this look better than it was. So, so what you have here, the half-year expense of fifty-eight, seven, is what I would estimate to be the worst-case scenario. But what that buys us is, that, that gets us an extra crew every day at the time that it's needed the most. I did a demand analysis and, uh, it's very clear that we need, we need a crew, um, at the times of the day that we specified. And, uh, you know, we, we just can't keep, keep going down this path. Eventually, it's gonna be a public safety concern and I don't think any of us want to, want to have that happen. We just can't, we can't keep running this volume with the same number of staff, not to mention the impact that it has on the staff themselves. It's, it's a tough day to run seven or eight emergency calls and see what you see and, and do that day in and day out. It becomes really difficult in your twelve-hour shift, so...
So, so how many of them are emergency calls versus just transfers?
Uh, right now, it's about sixty-five, thirty-five, but that number has been gradually increasing, uh, since December. The, the balance has been getting closer.
Sixty-five percent emergency?
Yeah. And again, it varies like, uh, I can't remember if it was Saturday or Sunday. We had, uh, a St. Louis trip, a Wentzville trip, a West Plains trip, and a Nevada trip.
Is that when you sent us where we had all eight ambulances?
No, that was Sunday. That was emergency calls. So, um, that's when we, and, and, so the neighboring ambulances, um, uh, I don't know if they're, uh, seeing the same thing that we are, but we're having less luck getting those neighboring ambulances to do some of these trips. That's why, uh, we had to have one wait overnight. We just didn't have any ambulances available and we tried every neighboring county, so the patient had to wait. It was a psych patient, so it wasn't a critical, uh, time-sensitive trip, but it's still not a good customer service issue for either the patient or the hospital to have to wait four hours overnight for an ambulance till we get our day crew there and are able to affect the, affect the trip. It takes up a hospital bed. It takes up nursing time. And, uh, I mean, we explained to them, there just isn't anybody available to do it. But at the same time, uh, we, we should be able to, to do most of these. And like I said, um, I don't ever wanna be in a position where, you know, we've got a couple ambulances out of town or three ambulances out of town, which is fairly regular during the day. During the day, most, most, most days, two ambulances are on the road to Columbia, almost twelve hours during the day, all day long. It's just the way it is. So, I don't ever wanna be in a boat where we have seven ambulances on. We've got three or four ambulances on transfers and we get a really bad car accident or an MCI and we can't rally resources. And while one crew isn't the panacea, um, it, it certainly is a help to get care started prior to getting our mutual aid called in. And I, I'll be honest with you, I, I've been really nervous about this for, for a month and I don't, this, this isn't, uh, me crying wolf. This is, this is, I, I believe, and I think Paramedics Plus shares, uh, my belief that, that we need to have this, this extra crew, additional crew.
Is that EMT crew?
Yes, that's what we would do. I mean, that's how we would implement it. I mean, budgetarily, it's twelve hours a day, seven days a week. But the implementation would be, once we get our transit, uh, would be to implement the BLS crew Monday through Friday, figure out the sweet spot, um, where most of the transfers happen. We believe that to be around nine to nine. Most of the emergency calls are twelve to twelve. But we believe with the overlap, because as I explained to you before, adding the BLS crew is, is in effect adding an ALS crew into the nine-one-one system, because you've taken the, the patients that are going to radiation therapy and all those scheduled visits that we do for the hospital, you're, you're using your BLS crew. So, you've, you've added an ALS ambulance in the system, because right now, that downs an ALS truck for forty-five minutes to an hour for each one of those calls. And if we do four of those a day, we've lost four to five unit hours a day of ALS time. So, adding this as a BLS crew during the day, once we get the transit. And this, this can't be up and running until the middle of July anyway. By the time we hire, train, get the equipment, do all that, this isn't something that's gonna happen tomorrow. So, um, that's why we annualized it, but then for this first year, I needed to know what the, what the added cost was gonna be, so that, that's how we figured it out. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be that much in the end.
Okay, I was trying to follow and look at documented stuff and I may have missed this, Jerry, so I apologize. But, so we're saying we're increasing calls, but we're not necessarily increasing the collections, because a lot more of them are not collectible?
No, I can't, I can't say that. It's just we, it takes ninety to a hundred and twenty days to, to get a claim. And so, with our collections in, or our, our charges increasing in April, we're not going to see an appreciable increase in what we're putting on the books until July or August.
They, but they can tell us what they're billing for, though, right?
Absolutely.
So, we should be able to do some comparison.
They can tell gross charges, because we have, we have a pretty good track record of collecting sixty to sixty-five cents on the dollar, like Debbie said. So, we built this spreadsheet at sixty, trying to be realistic but not overly optimistic, so...
This one here that Chris had, or the one, I've got seventy-two spreadsheets up here.
Well, we've kinda created our, kinda our own problem when we, we ask the hospitals to go through us for transport. And we're picking more of that up and then with our rates, I mean, it, to me, it makes sense. You know, maybe it's ninety to a hundred and twenty days. We're, we're gonna have more money.
Keep in mind, once those specialty care transfers start to, those are, those are high acuity trips that are paid at a much higher level by, by all of the insurance carriers. So, you're gonna see a, an appreciable increase once that starts. And I'm, I think we'll beat the deadline, but I asked Kevin and the clinical folks to have us up and running June one. Like I said, Thursday, we start our training. But it takes a little while to, to get all this stuff figured out, get the protocols in place and do all that. So, I think we'll start doing those transfers in, uh, uh... So I think we'll start doing those transfers in, in June. So you're going to see more transfers, more volume, more revenue, particularly for the specialty care.
Are you seeing Jerry's proposal for the transport crew?
I've got the transport crew proposal yet.
Is this back to where we were with pulling the night supervisor off the truck?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not for that.
They, they just cannot supervise from the backman ambulance, and I can't keep them at headquarters all night because they're on calls. And if we add this crew, it, at, when they come to work at six o'clock at night, they have the same number of people on duty that the day shift does. It doesn't slow down. I mean, the crews don't, uh, we don't start a reduction in staffing until eight and ten o'clock at night is when, so the same number of crews are on at six and seven and eight PM that are on during the day. So that, to me, this is another thing that needs to happen to, to be sure that all the crews are where it's supposed to be, the system's running the way it's supposed to be, that our supervisors are getting out on the calls they need to be. If, if it's their turn in the barrel to go to St. Louis, I can't have a supervisor in St. Louis. So I, I need them off the truck at night. That was, that was the long-range plan anyway. I think it probably is six months sooner than was anticipated, but that, as it was explained to me by, by Paramedics Plus, that was the long-term plan.
I guess that's the problem that we have, is that I don't know what plan you're talking about, because I've never seen that. John didn't explain that to me. If he explained that to someone else, I have no idea that we were talking about adding a crew.
Did we get a report from John?
They gave us a report, but I didn't, I didn't see that in the report. I didn't hear John go over that. And I guess, you know, my thing is too, is that, you know, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't send my supervisor to St. Louis if he was the next one up. I would, I would kindly tell them that they're going to have to wait until we have an ambulance available. I mean, supervisor should be the last person to go on a transfer, I would think. And so, I mean, that's, I guess that's my concern, is I see a snapshot here of what happened, and I don't know the snapshot that you sent us.
I'm not going to send you a snapshot every time this happens. I'm just not going to do it. That's why you have me.
Right.
So if you want to do this, you guys can do it, but you don't need a director. I was told that you wanted somebody to come in here and look at things with a, with a new eye and build the system that somebody can be proud of. This isn't a system, this isn't a, a recommendation for, to make us service of the year. This is a recommendation to provide these citizens the service they need. And I'm telling you, this is a public safety issue. Somebody's not going to get an ambulance eventually, and we will all have blood on our hands if we don't do this. That's what I'm telling you.
I'll disagree, John, because I've looked at our statistics from, Jerry, I'm sorry. But I've looked at our statistics from fifteen. We've had, the status zeros then were more than what we have now.
The status zeros numbers are inaccurate, I can tell you that right now. They're done by hand. And when status zero happens, that's the last.
These came from the same person that provided the statistics for seventeen that I have here.
Because they're done by hand. We don't have a CAD that we can get status zero out of automated, in an automated manner.
That doesn't mean that they're wrong.
It means that they're missed. I know they're missed because I've seen them.
So we actually had more status zeros back then.
There's, don't get caught up in status zero. Status zero isn't the end of the world. Sometimes, status two, status one, when we're pulling a unit in from Brazito.
Then where are we at with this? I mean, why are we, we're screaming blood on our hands right now, Jerry, and that's what I, I don't see as, as not being able to take care of 911 calls. And 911 calls are going to be my primary concern. If we have to turn transport down, if somebody has to wait for twelve hours because we're saving our coal-county people, then so be it. It's going to happen. I'm looking at the numbers. How many more transports per day have we picked up? I mean, we're looking at.
I can't tell you per day. I told you that we did nine hundred and fifty-five in, in April, and we're projected to do eleven hundred and twenty-five in May.
I'm trying to compare how many transports we do from, like, say, two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen. And there is a little bit of a discrepancy in the numbers. So if we've got four more calls we're doing per day, then you can justify the.
The calls are absolutely accurate. The status zeros aren't accurate, because there's no way to capture those. So in, in.
I figure four more transports is going to take every bit of the ten or twelve hours that you're trying to pick up here. So I'm working with the numbers on this. I'm not trying to fight you on it, Jerry. I got to make it all make sense.
So we're, we're on a pace to do eleven thousand five hundred calls this year for our first four months, day, the next eight months. And we did ten thousand seven hundred last year. So I don't, I don't have, in this particular report, I don't have fifteen. My guess is that fifteen was probably a little less than ten thousand and seven hundred. That seems to be the trend in the industry, but I can't say that for sure. What I have is two thousand and sixteen, and in every.
Two thousand fifteen was ten thousand one hundred and seventy calls.
Two thousand sixteen was ten thousand seven hundred and fifteen. There were only two, three, there were only four months in two thousand and sixteen that our total calls were over nine hundred. The rest of the time was in the eight hundreds. And like I said, last month was nine fifty-five, and this month, based on what we've done the first eight days of the month, if you extrapolate that for the rest of the month, it'll be eleven twenty-three. Do I think we'll get eleven twenty-three or eleven twenty-five? I don't know. But if, if it holds as it's been, it, it's, it's going to continue that path. So, so if we're not going to add the staff, then I need different direction for me, because my, my direction when I came here was recapture the, the market share of the transfers, get more transfers, those are the best-paying calls, and provides customer service to the hospitals and helps build relationships to the hospitals. So I kept doing that. And now I'm being told that 911 is our, our primary mission, let the transfers go.
I don't think we ever said that 911 wasn't primary, but we also wanted to capture the transports. But we were also told, hey, you capture these transports, you're going to more than make the money for bringing in the crews to do this.
You will.
So where is that? I think that's what we're waiting to see, Jerry, and we're trying to put all these numbers together and make them make sense. Because if you do need more staff, okay, well, we need to see where this money's at. If it's not there, then it doesn't make sense to be doing the transports.
On that one report from March and April, March, you know, there was eight hundred and seventy-two, and only six twenty-four got billed. Same way this month, eight, nine hundred fifty-five, but only six seventy-nine. So we're staying at the same percentage of what we're billing for. So that would be my only, yeah, we increased the number of rides, but we're staying at the same percentage we're billing for.
Yeah, but you got more, you got the same percentage, but you're able to still capture more of them, because you got the bigger numbers still at percentage. There's going to be more that you can capture. So I probably just talked it in circle, but.
No, I understand.
So even though it's the same percentage, we are, we're able to capture more of it. So that two sixty-two, one nine, or wait, what month are you talking about? March?
And April.
March and April. So those money in for a month are just money that we've gotten, or is that what we've actually billed?
It's just what we've actually got. The money for the month is what we've gotten in. Has nothing to do with those exact rides.
So you can't look at charges and collections for the same month, because you're not collecting the money that you charged for in that month. You're most likely collecting for previous months.
So March and April, we, we haven't seen it all yet.
Right, you haven't seen those collections yet.
I think that other sheet showed you how much had been collected.
I'm all for doing all of them, Jerry. I'd like to do every bit of it, primarily the 911. And if we can do almost all the transports, if we give one or two away, that's fine. I mean, Osage County, I think, would like to have a couple of them to help.
And I, I said we're never going to get them all. My concern is that, that we just don't have enough to go around. And again, don't forget the toll it takes on the people that, that are working the job too. And it's, I've been told, but it gets busier in the summer here. Most places do. People go out and do stupid human tricks. It just.
Oh, I think fifty-four, you'll have, with traffic coming to the lake.
What happens in the summer, I mean, people are out more, they're, they're riding their motorcycles, they're doing four-wheeling and all that stuff, and you just see more injuries. But the.
Two thousand fifteen, the summer was primarily lower, which is kind of weird, because I would think along the same way as you, because I know what I do in the summertime. Out on the river, you're out riding four-wheeling. You got to play fireworks.
My last point wasn't to be condescending, it's just what happens. If people are outside, being more active, doing things, whether it's breaking legs or getting in motorcycle accidents, it just, it happens a lot of places, but I'm told that it's a lot busier in this area in the summertime. Haven't experienced it.
I mean, it would make sense. I don't disagree with you there, but I was just looking at two thousand fifteen, so that was kind of weird, went against what both of us thought, or what you were told.
I think, you know, we asked, you know, you, you showed us how much we were losing to other ambulance districts on, on the transfers. And so, you know, we go to the hospitals and say, hey, we want you to go through us. And we need to be able to provide those, or else we're going to lose a lot of credibility.
To, to me, it's about managing relationships and providing service, and we, we need to have that relationship with the hospital. And not everybody has to go right away, but there are people that have time-sensitive illnesses and injuries that do have to go to right, that do have to go right away, and they're equivalent to 911-level calls. A trauma patient that's got to go to the trauma center at the university, a, a stroke patient that has to go somewhere for interventional radiology to, to take care of a clot, you know, heart attacks, all those kinds of things need to go to specialty centers. And, and those are, like I said, the equivalent of 911 calls. So we, we have to, to do those as well. And I've been trying to work with the hospitals on scheduling routine trips, whether it's regular trips to the cancer center, whether it's trips for patients back to the nursing home, or vice versa, so that we can build a schedule so that we can see when we're going to need the BLS crew and the transit the most. But it's still in its infancy. We're still, it's, it's still a bit catch-as-catch-can with them.
I think you're right. I mean, I think it's about building relationships, but relationships are a two-way street. So, you know, for a long time, the hospitals call and say, you have to go now, we need you to go now. And I know that firsthand. And anyway, but that's not always the case. If it's a 911, if it's an emergency, they got to go to Columbia, different story. But long-distance transfers after ten o'clock at night, those should be able to be pushed off until the next day. You know, those, those relationships have to be built, and that's a two-way street. I mean, we can't take one ambulance out of service for the entire shift after ten o'clock, when we go down to four ambulances. I mean, that's just not, it's not feasible, it's not, you know, it's not safe. If you've got other transfers that come in, we, we become short-staffed. And I know other ambulance services, they, they tell the hospitals, no, we can't do that. We're, we're short, we need to protect Coal County, or whatever county they're from. So, you know, there's some give and take with those relationships as well, and so.
There are, but they'll, they'll call somebody else. They, they won't wait for us.
Well, then.
It's, it's what happens.
Well, but we've, you've, you've told us that, you know, they've tried to call other people, and other people have turned them down too.
They have, but, but they don't always, that's not always the case. I, I don't know.
You know, my, my question to that would be is, okay, they called Osage Ambulance, and it was a long-distance transfer to Nevada, and why are they turning it down? Are they turning it down because they don't have the staff? Or are they turning it down because that trip doesn't pay very well?
I think the hospitals are kind of the same thing. You know, it's what they can bill for, and.
Well, sure, they want to free up their bid, because they don't want any more costs associated. Well, we don't want any more costs associated either.
Do you know why they're turning them down, Jerry? Or is it because they look and go, well, it's a three-hour drive, and we, it doesn't pay as good to be driving transporting these? Or is it because?
My gut tells me it's a variety of reasons. To be honest with you, I think we burnt the bridge a little bit there. They were taking all of them and are accustomed to them. So it's just conjecture on my part, I don't know. I haven't talked to them specifically about it. I know we did have email correspondence about them taking trips for patients that probably aren't going to pay. My response was that you asked to be called first. We don't, we don't give you the ones that don't pay, we give you the next one in the queue to go. Sometimes we don't even know, at the time that we call them, what, what their insurance is. So, so we don't know. We just, we, we use other services as we get busy, as we need them, based on the situation that's happening at that time. So it has nothing to do with the patient's ability to pay, and that's what I, what I explained to them.
I think you probably leave some of those counties completely uncovered, because I, I think some of them probably only have two ambulances, so.
They were the ones wanting it, though.
Yeah, but that's.
They were the ones complaining, and we started doing them all.
That's exactly to my point. I mean, you can't take one ambulance, if you only have two, you can't take one ambulance out of service for the entire time if, you know, I mean, because then if, you know, a major incident happens, you know, you're, you're done. So you're calling in mutual aid and everything else. So, you know, there's, there's got to be that relationship, and hey, you know, we're down to two ambulances, we can't, you know, we can stay local, but we can't go out of town. You know, or we're, or Osage brings them to CAP region, and then we pick them up and take them to the university.
Yeah.
Or, or whoever it is. But, you know, we take a lot of those from, from St. Mary's or CAP region to the university.
Mm-hmm.
And especially on the weekends.
You got a spreadsheet that shows us how many calls we've taken in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, just all across the board that.
I can get it for you. Right, what, what I brought with me today was sixteen and seventeen to date.
Because that's kind of where I'm comparing that.
I can get fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen to date.
Because I got the seventeen numbers, and I was comparing the fifteen numbers, and there's a little difference. Each month is, we have some highs and lows. If we had all of the year, so we can compare, because like I said, if you have four more transports each day, you know, that's, that's going to put a toll on it.
Well, like I said, the numbers I presented are the, to, to me, are the worst-case scenario. They, they probably underreflect revenue a little bit, and it may overstate the cost a little bit. The cost is probably closer than the revenue. The revenue is a guesstimate based on past performance and what we expect the future to be with our collection factor. So I actually thought the numbers looked pretty good, all things considered.
So there's probably two things that the numbers don't take into consideration. That's any unscheduled overtime. So the personnel cost right now is just scheduled overtime. So if you have any unscheduled, that'll be additional cost. The revenue side is probably a little off, just because of that lag in time. We're taking what we would have made on those lost calls in those months, but you're probably not considering that ninety to a hundred and twenty-day lag. So the first year when we start this, that revenue's still going to see that lag for the calls that we're picking up.
I'll be honest, I, I, again, I was okay with that, because if anything, I want to understate the revenue. So like I said, my, my thought was, let's present the worst-case scenario. So, so that's, that's why I didn't dig any deeper onto the revenue side. I'm not sure that we could have really gotten any, it would've been, been guesstimates at best, anyway. So I just, that's why I left it as it was. Left the collection rate a little lower than what our history has shown.
I mean, so if we put another unit in service, where's that going to, you know, you've encountered some issues with vehicles and, and different things too. So, I mean, that should strain your, your vehicle even further, so.
We haven't even talked about peace site coverage yet, either. We haven't even talked about peace site coverage yet, neither. So, not that that would, that's not additional staffing costs, that would be with the existing staff, but...
I'll just...
Yeah, it would, but the thing about it is, is generally speaking, in the EMS business, like a lot of other businesses, the more you're, if you wanna look at it like a business, and some people think it's an ethical conundrum to talk about healthcare as a business, but it's a business, if you look at it purely from a business standpoint, the more you're using your asset, the more return you're getting on your asset, albeit the return on your asset in EMS isn't very good, considering the fact that your main asset is a vehicle that depreciates exponentially to what your car does, so, if you had money to invest in the business, EMS would be one of the last businesses you would choose to do that with. I think that's...
Well, all healthcare, it's, yeah, it's...
Well, and again, who knows what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
I mean, with what's going on at the federal level. I'll be honest with you, in the, on the emergency medicine side of the House under Obamacare, we got lambasted. EMS and ERs across the country got lambasted, because all of a sudden, people who did not have medical care now had medical care, and they were using ambulances in the hospitals to seek their medical care, so, and the rates that they were paying under the ACA were Medicaid-level rates, which were the lowest in the industry, hence, a lot of private practice physicians didn't honor it. So, with what's happening now at the federal level, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you that it's gonna get any better or not, but what I can tell you is that I think this is a realistic snapshot of what we could expect if we follow through on this, based on what we know today.
Was all our equipment, that one email where we had three ambulances we were having issues with, we are all, we're all good right now?
It's been tougher, and again, I'm not sure we have any ambulance, we may have one or two under 100,000 miles, but they're all kinda hovering around 100,000 miles, but I'll be honest with you, I think, I think Cole County was turning ambulances over more quickly than they needed to. You should be able to run a diesel ambulance 200,000 miles pretty safely. You have to put a transmission in it, in some cases, the worst-case scenario is a motor, but if you put a motor in it, you can run it 250. So, you know, from a fleet standpoint, we're still in pretty good shape, but what I was trying to demonstrate to you is, it's not a case where you show up to work every day, and every ambulance is running, and the sun's out, and everybody's happy, and sometimes, I'm still, I'm not sure that we need 12, but 10 is not enough. When you have three units down, you don't, if you were to have even a flat tire, it'd have a devastating impact on your daily performance, so, I was just trying to demonstrate to you that there are more and more days like that, and it's gotten to the point that a lot of times, either I will take time out of my day, or the supervisor will, to run the truck there, and just sit there and tap our foot, and wait for him to get it done, and then bring it back, so we can, we can get it back in service. I'm not talking PMs, I'm talking, you know, parts failure here or there, so, but we've gotten by, we've had no problems encountered due to vehicle maintenance, it's just we've had an unusual spike in mechanical issues, and it's, I've asked to look at it from a preventable to non-preventable, because we think our PM program is really good, but I wanna make sure that it's where we need it to be, and it's not something that's actually preventable. So far, it hasn't been, we haven't had a broken bell, brake failure, anything like that, it's been routine stuff.
We should have the transit soon. John Keough was by yesterday, he was taking it out to Ford to get something done, I think they're gonna stencil it today, or tomorrow, or something like that.
Yeah, basically, he told me that it would be, that both units would be ready this week, or early next, it's just waiting on that cotton mount from Inferno to get in, and that takes the most time to mount, 'cause it's gotta be bolted and secured to the frame.
Jerry, I'm going back to your proposal. You're adding, well, seven people total, but it's basically six full-time positions. Is that right?
Five. Five full-time, two part-time.
Well, it mounts to six totals, where I was going seven, and six total, or six full-time. Okay, the way I was taking your emails, though, you were looking at ordering, requesting five days a week, like a nine-to-nine, right, so 12 hours?
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Basically, what I needed to get today was a commitment to do 12 hours, an extra 12 hours, seven days a week, and get supervisors off the truck at night. If I do that, then I can go back, I've got, there's a board in my office that we've all been working off of, it's got the schedule, and the demand, and all that, and we've got a nine-hour shift right now that's built into there, do we need to move that to, 'cause we still have the coverage gaps we've gotta take care of, but we could do that with the 12 hours, but the, from a full-time perspective, we would do Monday through Friday for the BLS crew, and then have the ALS crew on the weekend, so we would add, add a crew to the weekend. See, we don't have that nine-to-five crew on the weekend, it's already down one on the weekend, right now.
So, this proposal is two EMTs, five days a week, and an EMT and a paramedic, two days a week. So, you'd still have a 12-hour shift, seven days a week, is the numbers on the spreadsheet?
I should still have more money for the people that would fill these people's positions with paid time, though.
And to put it in perspective, this weekend alone, 16:32, we were probably around, and I'll get you the solid numbers, I'll email them to you, but I think we're around 40 additional hours of overtime, just this weekend, man-hours.
And I know we yelled at Mike Schertz on overtime, we've yelled at you on overtime.
But I had him give two transfers away, I think it was Sunday, you know, kinda melded in, the whole weekend was like that, but I think it was Sunday we gave two away, and still had extra, extra staff. That screenshot you saw included extra, extra staff.
So, we called in additional people to do more transfers, or to fill spots this weekend?
Both. We sent one to Westphalia, I believe, and then the others were here for 911 calls.
Westphalia. What was going on in Westphalia?
I think it was a psych transfer, I believe.
West Plains, you mean?
Did I say Westphalia? West Plains.
Westphalia's a lot closer than West Plains.
West Plains. I was told it was several, couple, three hours.
Yeah.
So, that means the sheriff had to bring in, when you do psychs, then we have to send a deputy, too?
It depends on if it's a voluntary or involuntary hold. If it's an involuntary hold, you need a peace officer, because we don't have the authority to detain, so, there's usually some legal paperwork on a hold, so, that's when we have to take a deputy with us. We've got a meeting coming up about that, there's some question about whether that's, continues to be a necessity. It's not really a safety thing, it's more of a legal thing, although I like it from a safety standpoint as well, so, brought in together the hospitals, EMS, law enforcement, social workers, to kind of decide what we're gonna do. The mental health thing here, obviously, we're not immune to the national plight of the mental health system, mental health beds are diminishing almost daily.
So, the crew would be, how many days a week, how many hours per day?
Basically, it would be 84 hours a week, 12 hours a day, seven days a week.
12 per day, seven days per week. All right, I got too many scratches on here, so bear with me. So, 12 times, seven times, 52, clear, 'cause I'm fat-fingered, 12. So, 4368, which is 8736 total, but then your annual hours on here is 13,104, what you're requesting.
Did you figure two people per shift?
Mm-hmm. I took seven days a week, 12 hours a day, 52 weeks, that's 4,368, double that to 5,000, or 8,736 total hours, and what he's requesting, I think, when, if I had that up correctly, is 13,000, so, I'm just trying to make the numbers jive here, Jerry, 'cause they're not making sense. If we're gonna be taking that many calls, it would seem that we had that much more revenue, and we're just, they're so far off, it doesn't make sense, so...
Well, the other two to consider is in this proposal, is taking the two night supervisors off of the truck. So, basically, adding two more.
Okay, so we're taking 8,736, and adding 4,368 to it, all right? 'Cause that's those two people right there, 2184 hours.
4,368.
If you take those numbers out, that makes things a lot unbearable.
I got 13,104, if I read my cellphone calculator right, 'cause I don't have the spreadsheet electronically, so, that's what I got on the annual hours, if you total it up.
That you requested, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we agree on that, and then if we do the 12 hours per day, seven days a week, 52 weeks, and that comes up to 8736.
I come up with 10,00920.
For what?
You take those two out, on the spreadsheet.
On the number of hours.
You take those two out of the spreadsheet, that puts you at the 8736.
Hours?
Mm-hmm. 'Cause you got the, you take all of them below that, that's 8,736, and then those two on top were the 3,000, or 4368.
Eight, 8736 without the overtime.
I just left it all in, I used a 2184 number.
This includes overtime, this calculation for overtime.
You take that $57,000 in salary and benefits, then, for each one of those, I mean, you have 58, that's 116, and now we're starting to get into breaking even, or being somewhere close to it, and then if you underestimated revenue, you know, kind of a worst-case scenario, then puts us back closer to someone we can work with. But if we're gonna add a crew, and be at an operating loss of another $120,000, it's not gonna make a whole lot of sense. Something's not diving there.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a matter of public safety, I mean, it's not, it's not going to make money. The best we can hope for is that eventually, through the increased revenues of the transfers, and the specialty care transfers, that it will pay for itself, but I don't know that we're ever gonna be in a position that the system completely funds itself.
No, we never said that, Jerry. We never said it was in it to make money, but when it was proposed, and, I mean, we had a real rosy picture, I said, look, if you capture all these transports, you're letting all these go, you're gonna make more money on these, this is where it's gonna help your bottom line, and this is not helping the bottom line at all, so, that's where I'm trying to justify, where adding a crew is actually gonna help us by capturing these transports. I mean, I'm all for doing all of the Cole County transports, EMS, 911.
I think that, and adjusting our fees is gonna make, but, yeah, we're not in...
And I'll be honest with you, we're, I've got some data that would suggest that we're still on the low side of median on our rates, and I thought that word to be the picture, but I've asked for some more data, and I'm certainly not gonna propose another rate increase, but I believe it to be reasonable to propose one as part of the 18 budget package, 'cause we're still under what, what most places in the area are charging as reasonable and customary for EMS. It's just that we fell so far behind, so, that was my, my thought going into the rate increase, I just didn't wanna have a 25% rate increase at one time, so, took a smaller bite of the apple. That's for 18, I just bring that up as a point of information.
Were my numbers right?
Yeah, I got to that 8736.
Okay. And I'm with Chris on that, you know, supervisors can be on a truck, I know it's gonna be difficult at times, but maybe they're the last ones to go out, however you wanna do it. I mean, even on other, on jobs, you've got a supervisor that's still performing duties, that can be accessed for questions and calls. If you get rid of those two, then that makes it just a lot more digestible, 'cause right now, it's not digestible at all, and I don't know.
Well, I disagree, I think supervisors ought to be there, but I think if you two are okay with the other part, we can address the supervisors sometime in the future. Don't pull your hair out.
So, yeah, supervisor in a well-oiled EMS system does a lot more than just supervise. I'll be honest, there, most days, they don't need me there. You don't need somebody looking over your shoulder telling you how to do your job, it's when those calls come in like the shooting last night. Law enforcement, police on scene, look for somebody to be in control and in charge of EMS at the scene, and there's nobody. You go to a call like we had yesterday with the heroin overdose in an apartment that's in way in the back, and you need somebody there to help you and help manage the patient's scene, you can't bring in the supervisor and another ambulance, because that ambulance is on duty, there's a variety of other issues that, to build a strong EMS system here, we need good supervisor support, integration with the other public safety entities that we work on, and work with on how to do this daily, that's the way we built, that's the reason we built out this new supervisor truck, the way we did, is so that we can do command structure with fire and with police, so, it's not all about just go mop the floor, go wash the ambulance, go replenish the stock, you don't have to tell these people to do that, they do that, and then they're, you know, they're available to help manage other things, too, whether it be, you know, I went out yesterday and shuttled staff back when we had some, we got busy and had some calls, and we had to move staff around, and so, there's just a variety of things that they can do to make the system work better. Can I get that it's not in the budget, but we have, you know, we have some contingency money available as well. Well, it's certainly not my intent to blow through that. I think this is a reasonable way to, to spend it, if we had to, to go there. We may not, in the long run. We may find out in October and November that we were off in a good way, and it, it will pay for itself. But I can't say, like I said, this is the worst-case scenario, I believe.
So do we do anything with having people on-call that you can call in if we get to a point where we need somebody in? Do we ever do anything with that, rather than waiting for it to happen and then call people in, and they're getting overtime?
We don't do that, but, but generally, people who are on-call get overtime when they come in anyway, if they're full-time. So you're, you're adding call pay?
I wouldn't put somebody as full-time on-call, though, is the thing. I'd, I'd say, "Hey, you know, you got people out there that are wanting to be on the crew, and then there's an opportunity for them. It's kinda like, you know, playing JV, you know, you're gonna do your time there, and then, you know, bide your time to get on varsity, and that's where they got a chance to go play varsity, and, you know, you gotta do your time, though. Start there. You find out they're a good employee, and you want them on full-time, they're next person in line."
So are you talking about paying people to be on-call, like on-call pay, or just...
No, I'm not necessarily on-call and paid, but to be on-call, unless you can get called in, we may have a transport to do.
So if I live in Osage, what's the benefit to me of being on-call, just to be called in?
To have some opportunity to get on full-time with EMS, Co-County. Have to do their time. They don't have to be from Osage County, they can be somebody that's local.
What I'm saying is...
Somebody who does take on more hours, too.
There's not that many people that live in Jefferson City proper that, that work part-time for us, because they work full-time somewhere else, or they work somewhere else.
Okay, so what are the times that are most, you're saying nine to nine, right?
Well, where, where we have the biggest gap in coverage is noon to midnight. That's the biggest gap, is we have a lot of nine-one-one volume in the evening, late afternoon, evening time. So the coverage map would suggest that we need a twelve-to-twelve crew, but I have to change some other shifts to get the nine-to-nine and noon-to-midnight coverage with the existing infrastructure that we have. And I've got some ideas on how to do that. Several of us have already been working on this, to see what the best way to do it is, but, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out. I wasn't gonna spend any more time until I, I had this discussion.
Well, if we can throw something together that's showing that we've got that much of an increase in calls, I'm probably for it, but not the night supervisors, taking them off the truck. I, I don't agree with that. They haven't sold me on that quite yet, but I'd really like to see the, the numbers and compare them. And to see where our additional calls are, that we actually have that many calls to justify having somebody come in here. I'm just not seeing it right now.
We're on rec, we're, we're on, on pace to set a record this month by nearly two hundred calls. I, I don't, and I don't know that this is an aberrancy. We've been building to this since I've been here. So I don't mean to be argumentative. I can get you fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen numbers.
So I guess I'm a little confused, because you were in here the other week, and we were talking about the call volume being up, and then you were just saying that you didn't see the call volume up. But when John was here, he was saying the call volume was up, and now you're saying the call volume's up.
It was up compared, what I was saying was, it was, when John said it was up, it was basically flat from, from John's numbers. It was hovering in the eight fifty, nine hundred range. Eight fifty-one, eight forty-three, eight seventy-two, and nine fifty-five this year. So, but to put that in perspective, it was in the eight sixties, eight eighties in most months in sixteen. In December, it went to nine seventy-one. Went from eight thirty-four to nine seventy-one, November to December. So that's why I said, even though they were up, they were flat based on what, what they'd seen since Paramedics Plus was here. Last month and this month are huge, huge jumps. I mean, you're talking ten percent and twenty percent this month so far.
So how many, how many of the nine hundred and fifty-five were transports, not emergency calls?
You mean transfers?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, I don't have that here. I'd have to, I'd have to get, I'd have to not run another report.
I mean, are we picking up that many, that many more transfers?
We had, put in perspective, in two, in April of two thousand and sixteen, we did a hundred and eighty transfers. In April of two thousand and seventeen, we did two hundred and ninety-five transfers. Those are numbers that are consistent throughout the year.
So that's two more trans, you said two ninety and two thirty?
Two ninety and one eighty.
One eighty.
One eighty in April of sixteen, two ninety-five in April of seventeen, one eighty-eight in March of sixteen, two fifty-one in March of seventeen. So those numbers are fairly consistent for the first four months of this year.
Well, I think by having the hospitals go through us first, we're gonna capture all we can, that we...
In the first month, we tracked, we tracked, after John was here, the first month, we tracked the number of transfers we gave away was September of sixteen. We gave away twenty-one. We gave away twenty-four in October. And then he started talking to the hospitals, and that number start, got cut in half. But we still gave away fourteen in January, ten in February and March, and seven last month. So we're still giving away a couple a week.
Well, the volume of calls are just, it fluctuates so much, so it's anywhere from seventeen a day to sixty-one.
So what kind of agreement are we working on with St. Mary's?
St. Mary's, well, there's a couple of things going on with St. Mary's. There's, uh, the, we do a lot of transfers for them to the outpatient clinics and what have you, and they've asked if we could work with them on giving them a, a discount on those transfers, and we bill them directly. And then also, there's, there is a situation where they, they disagree with our billing company and the Medicare regulations on paperwork for transfers. And the short story is that because of that disagreement, they didn't collect some of the paperwork they needed to move patients' transfers, so they incurred denials on the part of the patient, and so we billed the hospital for those services. And in a case like that, they requested that we give them a similar discount. It's a pretty common thing to do in the business, but there's still outstanding debt that they have from, from those transfers that we've agreed to disagree about. So it, it may be, because of the ramifications surrounding it, it may be best to, to deal with in closed session, to be able to have further discussion. But basically, they've, they've asked for a contract to do their scheduled transports, and I, I would think that would be a good idea. I would offer the same thing to CAP Region, to do their transports. The rate we would collect would still be better than rates that we collect from insurance companies, but they would get a discount. So it seems to be to be a win-win. It's pretty common practice in the, in the industry. I think it came from St. Mary's Corporate. They probably do a lot of that in the St. Louis area. They have a lot of private ambulance companies there. And so they sent us a contract. I had Jill look at it. Jill wants to talk to their legal folks, but it's just very preliminary.
So would we have more of a schedule then, as to when we're gonna transfer? So it's...
And unlike the ninety to a hundred and twenty-day thing, we would send them a thirty-day bill, and they just pay it. So it would be a lot less staff time. In fact, my suggestion was to do it internally, through, have Valerie do it, create our own invoicing system, working with Debbie, so that we avoid paying the fees to the billing company, because it would be straight up. We would already know what the rate is for the base rate and the mileage. We do that for each trip. You bill those number of trips, you send an invoice, Debbie gets a copy, they send us a check. It's all good. They don't have to, patients never see a bill for those services. Now, the hospital could put that on the patient's bill, if they choose to do that as a contracted service. Some do, some don't. We don't get involved in that, but it, it seemed to be a win-win. It would help reduce our, help increase our collections, reduce our time of billing and all that, so. But again, just really preliminary. If, if it was something that I thought was worthwhile, obviously, if we got to that point, I'd, I'd send it on to you.
Well, I'm definitely not for adding the, or replacing the night supervisors, I guess. As far as adding, I want to see some more numbers yet, and I'd really like to see where the call volume has increased that much. And, you know, if we gotta start turning away twenty-four transfers a month, it's just, we're just gonna have to do it. We did it before, we survived. As long as we're taking care of the, the nine-one-one calls, that's the primary responsibility that we have, is taking care of our emergency crews, our emergency calls. And we've had, I forget who said it, that was back before you, Jerry, said that we were on the call-in hall, is what we were. And then we kinda got away from that and said, "We're gonna have to work around that. You're gonna have to work around our schedule, because there are times when we're busy, we just can't get to it." Sometimes they're just gonna have to wait if it's not an emergency transfer, so. And there's reasons why these other people aren't taking the calls. So, you know, they can be mad at us, but nobody else is taking the call. So they can be mad at everybody, I guess, either that, or they can start paying more money. I mean, they want a discount, but, I mean, we're looking at an operating loss of a hundred and seventeen thousand to take these transports, so, I don't know, this thing is something we need to look more into.
So is this a shift in policy? So we should start turning more of these transports over to other entities and go back to a hybrid way of what we used to do?
I don't think there's a policy change whatsoever. We've never had a policy change. Back whenever John came in, he said, "Hey, you're losing some transports here and some money. We can, we can get these. We can get these transports, and we can have more revenue coming in, and realize more revenue." But we're not seeing it, and I really wanna see where we're getting that many more calls. And our policy, I guess, if we have a policy, it's always been take care of nine-one-one first, emergency, emergency calls first. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong...
Well, I think, I think we directed John to go talk to the hospitals, because we were losing a lot of business, you know, not that, but, so I think that's...
We were losing twenty-four transports per month. Then we were down to twelve. So basically, that's, we picked up twelve more transports per month, and now we need another crew to handle twelve more transports per month? That's less than one a day. If you look at our calls per day, it fluctuates so much from seventeen to sixty-one in April of seventeen, and these are Jerry's numbers here, or from Kevin, I guess. There's gonna be times when we are taken down, and we're thin, and the crews are just gonna have to suck it up at that point. We just did a whole bunch of changes. We got sergeants and everything, they're gonna have to step up. They're gonna have to be able to supervise while they're on a, on the ambulance. We gave, um, pay raises, we got, we did pretty much everything that they asked for. So when this came in, there was a big list, and got approved. So just gonna have to work with it right now.
I don't think we've changed anything. I mean, obviously, we only have got so many vehicles, we got so many people, and we gotta work within our means there. I mean, we, we can't expect our staff to work six and seven days a week, because they will get burnt out, like Jerry said. But at the same time, you know, we've only got so many people, and we only got so many ambulances, and we have to manage those resources. First priority, nine-one-one. Second priority is capture as many transfers as we can. But, you know, until, until we can really see that, you know, these, if these LDTs are happening at night, yeah, we need to tell them that they're gonna have to wait, because we can't, our resources are slim at night. I just, I don't see any other way. I mean, we just, you can be the best nine-one-one service you want if you got unlimited resources and unlimited amount of people. I mean, if that's the way we wanna go, that's not the way I wanna go. I wanna be an efficient organization that does the best that it can. You know, you're never gonna take every call. You manage your resources, so you have your resources available for nine-one-one calls. You know, if you get down to one ambulances, one ambulance at night, you know, you're, you're kinda rolling the dice, because something could happen. So I don't really know what, what the policy there is, what the dispatch policy there is, but, you know, nine-one-one first, capture as many transfers as we can, but manage our resources. That, I mean, obviously, trying to run every, every transfer that comes out of the hospital is just not, it's not possible. That's why CAP Region got rid of the EMS service, because it was costing them a million dollars a year. I mean, we've invested a lot of money in, in EMS. We've, we've bought new ambulances, we've given raises, we've restructured everything, and, you know, they got, they got power cots. I mean, they, they've got the best of equipment, they got a great facility, they've got a great staff, but how many more people are we gonna add? I mean, I realize the call volume's up, and, you know, I'd just like to see more data that shows, you know, that revenue increase, because I agree with Jeff. John painted a rosy picture before he left. "Hey, you capture all these transfers, and your revenue's gonna go way up, and this, this service could almost pay for itself." I believe is what he said.
Yeah.
And right now, we're operating at a, at a huge deficit, and this plan would take us more of a deficit, might break even, but it still hasn't recouped the deficit that we've already, that we are, currently have.
Jerry, I think it's, what basically they're saying is, we're gonna wait and see what the figures are, and you keep sending us those reports, and, you know, it might be pretty quick, have to take some action, but... Do we have any other issues?
I have a quick one.
Uh huh.
I was contacted by the assessor's office that we've already exceeded the estimate on George Sansosi for the Ameren case. I don't know at this point if you guys want to transfer as much as we need to pay each invoice as it comes and kind of review them as they do come to kind of decide if we want to continue going on. It's kind of up to you guys. We do have a transfer there for the amount needed to pay the March invoice that we have.
Are you sure ready to get the other entities back together and maybe make it another arrangement for them to be in on this again? Because right now, we're still waiting for two of the entities to actually pay us.
I think maybe we do need to set up a meeting with them and just...
Or have the attorney come back and please talk to you guys about where we are again.
Do we get charged for them to come and talk to us?
Well, that's a little bit compared to what they're charging here.
Yeah.
Well, they don't have to charge me two thousand bucks to come tell me, yep, we're still in it.
Yeah, 'cause I think we were hoping that what we had paid earlier was gonna be kind of it for the year, but...
No, I don't think we were at that, was it?
So we're okay with the, the attorney's fees at the moment? We're still within what we budgeted for it, but the George Sansosi, we budgeted sixty thousand.
So the sixteen thousand, six thirty-one, and oh seven transfer is within what we approved?
No.
This is...
It will be additional to the sixty thousand that we put in there to pay George Sansosi.
I thought you just said we were within what we budgeted.
The attorney's fee is still within, he is the...
That's Lewis and Reed.
This is the appraiser.
Oh, this is the...
Sansoni is the expert witness.
They're specialists, yeah.
Yes.
He's the expert witness, and I don't know, he must just keep going and testifying just because he gets paid thirty thousand dollars an hour or something.
Well, I guess in his defense, he's getting, he's the one being called in. He's, I mean, I'd be volunteering to do it too for that much, but...
Yeah, who wouldn't?
So that one, okay.
Flying in on his private jet.
So that will pay his March invoice. We have not seen an April one yet, so...
We're getting monthly invoice, we're getting monthly bills from him?
Last month it was thirty thousand.
What's the ice maker?
The circuit court over there in the jury assembly room, they put a new ice maker in and tuned it over three thousand. They are paying part of it out of their, their money, and the rest of it, they want to come out of their office supplies. So instead of letting them take it out of office supplies, we moved it to...
Equipment.
I thought we talked about the ice maker at some point or not. Is that something different or was it?
I didn't.
Sorry, Joe.
I know it wasn't working, the old one, I guess.
Whose ice maker is it?
I don't know, yes, that mix there, it's for the jury assembly.
Okay, well, then they can pay for it.
Well, that is their budget. They're taking it out of their office supplies.
No, I was talking about, is it the state's?
It would get a county tag.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm sorry when I said theirs, I meant, is it the state's or is it ours? So it is ours, and they're gonna pay for two-thirds of it.
Yes, I thought they were paying half and we were paying half.
I thought it was over three. I don't know, let me look how much it was. Do you remember?
Fifteen twenty-one fifty is what this one's for. So if it was three thousand dollar ice maker, we're paying half.
It was over three, yeah.
So is that a transfer or...
Yes.
Was it three thousand and forty-three dollars?
I think it was, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's it, right? Call me a fool.
There's some...
Our truck, I need those.
Somebody fell down. The twin towers.
It was three thousand forty-three dollars.
So, yeah, we're paying half.
So...
So it's half. What are you gonna do when they run out of office supplies though? Come back and want more money?
That's what you, we want you to be aware of. They could, maybe not.
Who was, who was paying for this? Circuit clerk?
She paid half of it out of her interest account and half of it's coming out of her general fund account. So we do have the option if you just wanted to pay it...
General funds or office supplies?
We're moving it out of her office supplies into our office equipment. Because technically it should be office supplies.
But her office equipment is in general fund. So you could, you could, if you didn't want to pay it out of general fund, could pay it out of sales tax.
Just take it out of her budget and we'll just deal with it at the end of the year if we're a little short on office supplies.
Yeah, but she had, she had asked for a lot more in office equipment this past budget year. Not sure why, but she, she seemed to have some reason that she needed more money and...
We talked about chairs.
And we said no.
That she had a bunch of chairs that she wanted to buy, and we said...
Oh, yeah.
We would prefer not to pay the chairs out of office supplies.
Right.
But this is kind of the same circumstances. I don't know that equipment like this should be considered office supplies. It, it skews that history of the amount of supplies they're actually using.
Right.
So that's why we're moving it out of office supplies and into office equipment so we can track those costs based on type of cost.
We have less than half of the budget left at this point, with that taken out.
She'd have half of her office supplies left?
About seventy, it was seventy-four, and she started with thirteen. Then again, I don't think second quarter office supplies out of there. No, not yet.
So this is just a transfer out of office supplies into equipment and furniture, furniture? We make note of that on the budget worksheet.
Can I write in those notes somehow? Go back to the budget process and write in those notes or, once it's done, can we do that?
Where are you gonna put it now here?
I would say in her office supply account.
So you can go back to the budget and add no?
Okay, that's what I wondered if you could add.
Guess you guys have already signed this, so you're good with it?
Yeah, I was, I mean, we could go and take out the others.
So you must have just taken total, that was in equipment.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good ice maker, three grand.
That, that Sansoni has me concerned a little bit that we're going through all this money, and of course, he's that expert witness, and so I've made a couple of calls just to some other counties since, to see if they don't have maybe, their assessor or whatever might not have a little more information as to what's going on and where we're at. Because, I mean, I would have thought this is just lawyers showing up, you know, all the expert witness, should, stuff should be done. They've already created a case. They're just appealing this stuff, so I don't know why he would have to testify again and again and again, when they should be able to just record that and just present it if needed, but most of the stuff is just appeals. We've already won the case. It's gone to Supreme Court or something and they threw it back down.
They kicked it back.
Oh, 'cause they kicked it back. Do they let you have new witnesses then?
I think they're starting on the next years. So they're just starting on the next years.
So this is a different year.
So they're just going all over the whole process again, which you would think that we'd just wait, but...
But what we were told is that once, once thirteen was, was settled, that the case was fourteen and fifteen and all of them would be the same. So, you know, I mean, what, what more information are you gonna present that you haven't already presented in thirteen? I mean, so, that you couldn't record and say, okay, here we go again. Here's the exact same.
I think Ameren's lawyer is just gonna stretch this out as long as he can.
And that's, and that's fine, but I mean...
Because again, you get some counties that are probably gonna just...
Drop out.
Drop out, so it's, it's kind of a wait and gain.
But what they had originally said when they came is that once thirteen is settled, then fourteen and fifteen and all of them will just follow suit. It's the exact same case you're presenting for fourteen and fifteen. I mean, you can record it and hit play. Here you go. Wanna watch this?
I don't know, yeah.
Well, I mean, if I'm then, I'm stretching it out as far as I can to see when the defendants will fold, if they'll fold, and keep on pushing, and, you know, we're in it this far. We got, we're going, and we're in it for, pretty much for good now, unless y'all want to say we're done, but unfortunately, it's like we're gonna keep getting these bills.
Well, but at some point, at some point, you know, the school districts and everybody else has contributed. We haven't asked them going forward if they will contribute, okay? So when, when the county has invested four hundred thousand dollars, that's ten years' worth of revenue that we would receive from this for the difference. So we're out about forty thousand dollars per year, and, you know, at some point, the schools and everybody else is gonna have to chip in again because they, they stand to lose the most.
Well, if you wanna ask them, I don't have a problem asking them.
Well, I think we just, are, are we getting, sending them reports? I mean, do they know what we're paying or...
Well, I think Jill's sent them a letter to bill them for the last time, but I don't know that they've gotten...
That was just for sixteen or for thirteen, but that was for the previous year.
That's just for, right, for the remainder of, we billed them twice and for the, up to the one eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
And so once they, these two entities pay, we'll be back to one eighteen, but we're way over our one eighteen of this, so it's time to go back and ask them to stay in then, so we're, we just continue to pay the rest of this. And obviously, Jeff City School and Jeff City has the most to lose out of this in future years. Unlike us, us, our public works, it's not that much. It's gonna take us a long time.
Yeah, but Russellville stands to lose probably, you know, the least out of, out of it compared to the schools, but they also have the least amount to be able to afford to help pay for it.
Right.
So if we come to Russellville and say, hey, you wanna throw a little bit in it to help, you know, recoup some of it, what are y'all gonna say?
Well, we are ready for it.
I mean, you can't really say, 'cause you're, I mean, you're still on the board, but, you know, at what point do they say, okay, we're not, we don't have any money to throw towards the attorneys for this?
I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from too. At, at what point do we say we're done?
I don't think we can. I think we're in it, we gotta defend it, and it's a, it's a county function. I mean, we got, if we're just gonna say, okay, we're already too far, and if we're gonna say we're not in it anymore, then we should have done that a long time ago and said, okay, y'all can have it, then we're not gonna fight over it. It's two million dollars a year and goes to Jeff City Public Schools. It's not to us, so no, no hair off our back, but I think it's a, it's a function of the, I really think State Tax Commission will be paying for it because they're the ones that got us in this mess. If they would have stuck to their decision the first time, you know, they'd be out some money, but we wouldn't be out quarter million dollars of attorney's fees on it. So I don't know what the schools are gonna say. They may say, well, okay, we don't have any money to put towards it. Russellville's rich though, right? No? It's like, I mean, Blair Oaks ain't gonna have any more either, but I think that's a rich school out there, but I don't have any more money than anybody else. Samuel's Tuxedos won't pay more.
I mean, I just think at some point, we gotta have a...
I think we do, to a certain extent.
A number. I mean, everybody, everybody in Cole County's paying for it right now.
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
And so, you know, we're in it, we're in it for a quarter million probably right now. That's probably our share.
And more.
We're over three hundred is what we've paid so far.
That's just us?
Just us.
Does that include what we build the school districts and stuff?
It's over four hundred once we, what we've built this whole...
So we've, we've already spent taxpayer dollars of three hundred thousand dollars, and going forward, we got another hundred and sixty for Lewis and Reed, and, and then a sixteen thousand dollars for Sansoni, Sansosi, and then we don't know where the ends are at, so, you know, half a million dollars.
Yeah, they keep saying the light's at the end of the tunnel, but I think it's just a train each time running our asses over for more money. Now, now I gotta pay a dollar thanks to them. Because it, it does every time they talk about it. Oh, well, it's almost done. Then we just get another bill in the mail.
Right.
I know.
I'm as frustrated as you are, but I don't know if going to this, I mean, we can ask the schools what they wanna do, what they think we wanna do, if they wanna throw some money in.
Well, I mean, when we first started, Mark was still here, and I remember having the conversation that, you know, that they were talking two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and we were like, okay, we're in it for half, the one eighteen. And then we asked the schools and everybody else, you know, hey, you guys, are you guys in this? And we said, once one eighteen's up, you know, we may be done. Of course, now we're, now we're three hundred in.
I would probably need to go back to the schools, and I mean, I think...
And that...
Well, so, I mean, we're in it.
Make sure to ask.
But it ain't gonna hurt anything to ask.
Please make them aware of what's...
So they'll send us a thank you card?
You think we'll get one of those? I doubt it.
That depends off if they're listening today or not. I don't know. It's, lawsuits are frustrating all the way around, so...
We need to be, get jobs as expert witnesses is what it comes down to.
I know.
On a lighter note.
Good.
Which probably not, paint and carpet. It's become quite the, quite the circus around here as far as what each department would like for paint. I would paint it a little on the wall over here, samples, nobody wants that. We've also looked at, going back to the lady at Scruggs, to let her pick out the colors...
I thought y'all picked out color for it.
Well, then it changed after they painted it on the wall.
No, no change in minds. Why did we...
Go look, have you seen it?
I walked in there last, I walked in there last week.
Two dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, then lighten it up.
Okay, well, either Jim Wish came up yesterday and is going to maybe have a lady come by and look at what everybody has and let her make the decision.
Here's the deal.
If it's approved by you guys, of course.
I'm gonna go out there, I'll pick a color. It's gonna be the most hideous color, and then y'all are gonna, it's just like being married. You do this when you're married to yourself, you don't want to go shopping with your wife. Seriously, it was on the Seventy Show too, it's very true. You pick out the most hideous thing, she goes, no, never mind, I'll just do it myself. I thought y'all had already done that.
Well, we did until it was painted on the wall. So if you guys are okay, that lady's gonna come up with a solution, bring it to you guys, you guys get the final approval, and let's go.
If y'all give it your blessing, I'm fine with it, but if y'all don't decide on something that y'all agree on, then we'll pick. That's the way I see it. I don't want to pick colors, I'm sorry.
Paint and carpet.
Carpet's already been picked.
So carpet y'all are fine with, you just didn't like the paint because it's too dark.
Well, if you ask, some people are not okay with the carpet, but we can't not please everybody in this building. I'm just saying, you better not think that that's going to happen. We all have different tastes, and it's not gonna happen. You can get the majority, but then you still have other departments saying, well, can I use the stuff that you're putting around the door?
Debbie, y'all spent hours picking the color of the carpet.
And that's why we're done.
Okay, but the paint on the wall, I understand that it's darker than y'all like, so get a lighter color, right?
Like, gotta paint it on the wall?
Do a test spot, because it's gonna be here for...
We picked lighter color, but some of them still didn't like that, so we're done with that. This lady's gonna come, do it for us.
It was so much easier being married. You just had one that you had to come up with.
So we're gonna have both colors painted on the wall, the, the base color and the trim color or whatever?
Tell her that. Once she picks it out, we wanna see it on the wall, and then you guys can agree to that and move forward, because you're not gonna get consensus.
It's fine.
She talked about a third color, being an accent color, so, kind of like this would be an accent color, you know, that would be versus the trim around the door. When we first picked it out, we were gonna go with whatever was around the door be the accent color, but she was saying more that she'd come up with three.
Okay. Can you get her to come up here and maybe do that, and we'll maybe have her at the meeting next week? So we can... next week so we can make a decision?
That'd be fine with me. And the questions are gonna come, can I use that accent from all my walls? And then, they, everybody wants to be a little different, you know what I mean? Like if we say that's the accent color, then they'll say, well, can I paint my whole office that color and use the trim door for my accent color? You guys are gonna have to decide that.
Well, the contractor's gonna be able to decide that too, because he's saying, no, when we bid this, this whole room was this color, that's how it's bid. It's bid a five gallon bucket of paint for this room.
They're also easier if you have to go touch up or anything. Everything's the same color and you don't have to say, whoa, is that the dark color?
But Jim is very nice, he's trying to please everybody in this building, and I told him that's not gonna be able to happen, unless you guys want that to happen.
Personally, if they want an accent wall and he says, yes, I can do it, an accent wall, like if LV wants to do it, a certain wall, different color, and, and it's within the bid, I really don't care.
I think if you got two colors and Larry wants this, or Steve Korsmeyer wants this, I mean, you gotta live with it after it's done.
I mean, even like this wall that sits out, they wanted to paint that white and the sides a different color.
How was it bid?
They don't care, they didn't bid it specifically.
I would say they bid it all like it was.
If Jim says, okay, we can do it that way, then do it that way.
Maybe Jim could be here too.
Okay.
I mean, my opinion would be, all the door frames would be one color.
Right.
Nope, there's no change in that.
I would think you'd want consistency in the building.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the walls, I really don't care if they go one color or the other, but, you know, then it'd be up to Jim. I mean, if we got a little softet or something like that, you know, I don't think they wanna paint one white and one a different color. I would say it all need to be the same color, so...
We're to that point now, either you guys have to prove what Jim's gonna have to do or...
That's fine, so...
Okay, well, I'll have Jim up here, and hopefully that lady will get up here and, and then we'll get that done too by next week and have her here.
Okay.
Okay.
Be good.
Anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
Nope.
Nope.
Anything, Jeff?
This is one fifteen.
Move to recess before thirty?
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.